All right, call the meeting in order, start with the pledge.
By the United States of America, to the Republic, with just one nation, united, peaceful, free, and just...
Okay, we're motion to approve the agenda. We got a motion for Bo, seconded by Amanda, all in favor, 7-0 Amy. Now, consent agenda, just need a motion to approve that, if you've got any questions about any bills, now's the time to ask. If you need abstaining, please do so, or if you've got any questions about anything that's on there.
5-0, 4-4-6, SHI International Court.
S-H-I, how much was it?
Twenty-one, two forty-eight fifty.
It's probably our Chromebooks. It's twenty-one thousand?
Twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-eight.
That's your Chromebooks. We buy a lot of Chromebooks, that's why I'm saying it's probably your Chromebooks. Thank you for that.
Double check. Yeah, I remember, I always said Chromebooks.
Anybody got anything else? Just need a motion.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
So we got a motion by Amanda, seconded by Bo, all in favor, 7-0 Amy. Next up, reports. Starting off.
Dr. Rob, I sent a link to you guys, it will not go through that entire list. I've been on, since our last board meeting, three or four different hour and a half long webinars with our lobbyists, and things that are going on since the governor's stated state address. Summing that up, just basically, still a lot of push for privatization of education in Missouri. You've got open enrollment, when he says school choice, they're talking about open enrollment. Talked to Willard Haley, our representative, he said, "Bear will," in his opinion, "BA bill that passes this year regarding open enrollment." So what does that mean for us? Anywhere from three to five percent of our kids could leave in any one year if they want to. For example, just a lot, there's all different incarnations of it going on right now, maybe three or four. One of them's three percent of your kids could leave per year, another one's five, and basically what that would mean is if Versailles says their Board of Education approves, which you'd have to approve to be into open enrollment, you have to be able to accept kids, then our kids could say, "I want to go to Versailles instead, because I think their facilities are better, I like their football coach, or I like, they've got more dual credit," or whatever it is. They can go down the road, and Versailles can enroll them and get the ADA for them. So you're getting in more of a competitive market for kids. So if you think about who all your competitors are around, you know, the big ones would be California, Eldon, Versailles, Sedalia, a little farther down the road, Jeff City may be a competitor, maybe not, I don't know what parents were looking for. Anybody participating in open enrollment could, with their board approval, they can accept kids, and we can definitely lose them. Lose up to five percent, some of these bills are saying. So that's one of the reasons why facilities are important, it's why opportunities are important, our extracurriculars are important, our co-curriculars with vocationals are important, the product we offer, what's drawing in kids. You don't have any kids, you don't have any customers, you don't have any customers, you don't have a business. So becoming more of a business-type model, and the state's okay with that, so that's what's going on. They are directing, according to the governor, and that's what's in his budget, doesn't mean it's approved, but at fifty million dollars in vouchers, it's called a voucher tax credit. Basically what that means is there are several different educational organizations which the state is giving up to fifty million dollars. So if I'm Anheuser-Busch, for example, out of St. Louis, and we owe hundred thousand dollars for taxes of some sort, we can say we want it all to go to this educational agency, and that educational agency will distribute it to a long list of private schools. So it's kind of like one step removed, not giving state money directly to private schools, but giving it to an educational agency. I think there's eleven in the state, or eight. That agency then takes and disperses it to the schools of their choice, and they're all around the state, they can disperse it to. So up to fifty million dollars going away from public ed. There's seven million dollars going to charter, charter schools. Probably the worst thing that we heard, now it's not passed, this is just what the governor is proposing and putting to Republican General Assembly, is to take our SAT, our State Adequacy Target, and freeze it. It went up last year for about three, four hundred dollars, even though the foundation formula says next year it should go up and give us about two hundred thousand dollars more to work with. They're not going, he does not want them to follow that, he wants them to hold it, he wants to start a whole new school funding modernization task force to redo the entire foundation formula in short order. And I'll tell you, that has taken years before, the one we have now is about twenty years old. So to figure out how to disperse state money to schools. And you really want to know about the State Adequacy Target, I've said it before, is that over twenty years, that State Adequacy Target until last, until this year, had only gone up four point two percent. We don't have to wonder why Missouri, as a state, thank you Roxanne, as a state, has ended up having the lowest average teacher salary in the United States, and why it became a focus, and why it was on our legislature's agenda in passing SB 727. This is why they did it, but they're now, we've got like this little rug pulling thing going on, we're going to pull it out from underneath you. We're not going to honor, according to the governor, this is what he wants to do, we're not going to honor that it should go up. Well, this would help us, right? Help us get there, but he's going to try to keep it flat. At any rate, he's making statements like, "We're not getting the kind of results we want from our schools," wrong. We're getting a lot of results, in fact, our DECA group was up there meeting with him the day after that, posing with him. "Huh, wonder what those results are." I hope he sees this video. "Don't pose with our kids anymore," I don't mind saying it, "you know, if we're not getting any results, don't pose with our kids anymore." Just kind of insulting, honestly. So open enrollment's on the horizon, we're competing, twenty-five, twenty-six, we have to be at forty and forty-six K. The good news is, he's proposing, and as long as it gets through all the finance committees and whatnot, that they will still fund that gap that we have. Everybody should know our base salary for teachers is thirty-three-five, that's the lowest baseline salary we can offer. We are, we are at thirty-three-five, but the state is funding us up to forty thousand, and then we work from there on our salary schedule. A lot of districts are in this position, when you have a low operating levy, this is the position you're in. If you want to say, "That's not right," no, that's right, we have a low operating levy. So, you know, what do we do about it? We go to our voters, that's why there's a levy that's on, we need some help. We don't know exactly what the state's going to do, but the good thing about the power of this board is that by the end of June, when we know what the state's going to do, even if a levy passes in April, you can look at it in August, and I can look at it in August with our municipal advisor and say, "You know, we really don't need that full fifty cents, we need thirty-two, we need twenty-five, here's what we need to break even, here's what we need to get our salaries in the right place." So there's a little bit of wiggle room there for you as a board, as long as it is put at fifty cents, you can go up to fifty cents. We set up to a dollar at one point, because it looked pretty dire at one point, because it didn't look like they were going to go up to sixty-seven, sixty on the SAT, it was like sixty-three, forty, or something like that. Kind of the semi-bad news is, and they say they're going to catch up, is they still haven't paid the sixty, sixty-seven, sixty yet. It was sixty-six, fifty this last month, so you're losing about a hundred dollars a kid right now. But after talking to Desi, I made some calls, and they seem to think they're going to be able to do it. Here's the good news too, the state is sitting on about four billion with a B dollars right now. They're still pretty flush, so it's going to be hard, and as I visit with Massa, so after the webinars and going through that, we'll sequence. This past week, I went to the Massa, I guess that was Monday, no, it was this week, went up to the Massa doing the budget, and they seem a little more optimistic about, it's going to be very difficult for the governor to say, "Hey, we want you to pay teachers more, we want you to do all these things, but we're not going to on to the foundation formula, how's that work?" You know, we're not going to honor our own laws and things that are set in place. Don't give the old excuse of just throw money at it and it'll cure education, but we changed our scoring guide too for schools. That takes more personnel and more focused on a lot of different things, so it's a Wild West show up there right now, just what's going to come out. But I think open enrollment, from what I'm hearing, will come out this year, that's according to Willard Haley. And a good thing, a good thing, let's talk about a good thing. So what do we need to run school? We need kids, right? We've probably lost about thirty in the last three or four years now, that's on our ADA. We need to draw kids here, we need them to be here. We have some parents sometimes that want to bring their kids here, and they work for contracted services. I sat down and talked to Willard Haley about this problem. These people are working twenty hours a week or more in our district, but they're not counted as a regular employee, so their kids can't come here. We all know this, they can't come here, even though they're working for our district. So Willard and I got on the phone, we sat at a Lady Cardinal basketball game, he came down from the Capitol, he knew we were over there. "Terry, you're going to be there?" I said, "Yeah, let's sit in stands and talk this out." He now has a bill, HB 1238, that would allow people who work for contracted services, I sent it to all your texts just a minute ago or so, that has it right in there, you can look it up, and he is pushing that through the House right now. So I don't know if it'll pass, because a lot of bills die, you know, remember the old Schoolhouse Rock song? If you're old, Kelly Colly knows, "I'm just a bill, yes, I'm only a bill." So, you know, sitting here on Capitol Hill, "Maybe in the end, you know, it becomes law, it's just got to go through committees and all that stuff." So, you know, it may become a law, and I went, "Hey, I got to suggest the law, look at that." So really thankful for Willard Haley listening to us, because I think it's a good thing. We get better employees working for Durham, we get better employees working for OPA, they're local people, they're committed to our kids. You talk to some of those employees and say, "I want to work for Tipton, but I kind of work for Durham," or "I kind of work for OPA," or maybe even Midwest, you know, "but it'd be convenient for me to bring my kids here," and guess what? We can claim the ADA, we can claim whatever the SAT is on, so that's a good thing. So I hope it passes, because like I go back to, we need customers, we need customers. So if we're the draw, people working for contracted services, working twenty hours minimum, he's got it all written up in there, they'll probably go through some different incarnations, I'd like to see that pass, so kind of a good thing, right? We want to draw more customers. But that's kind of the overview, just some basic things, I got a lot of notes, kind of makes my head hurt sometimes, because I think, man, if some of these things come out, how, how are we going to keep up? Right now, going back to that baseline teacher salary, you look at some of our schools and the conference, we have the lowest baseline. Here's the conundrum, or the difficult dilemma I'm in, we're at thirty-three-five. If I continue to raise that up, I continue to chew into our fund balance. They will fund me right now with a grant to the tune of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this year, and did about the same amount last year, to make up that gap, to get to forty. But once I close in on forty, guess how much they give me? That'd be a goose egg, none. So then we're all on the hook for it. Right now, where our, our operating levy is, I can't put us in that position, or we're even more deficit spending. I have to claim that grant for as long as it's available. And it's year to year over whether that grant's going to be available. Right now, the prevailing wisdom on what Massa says, and Jason Hoffman, the former CFO, he does these presentations up there with Massa, he's a prevailing wisdom, I think he thinks that we'll still get that grant this year, this coming year. We're going to get it this year for sure, but this coming year, we may get it again, he said, because they're in a bad spot. They told us we got to go to forty, but there's a lot of districts claiming this grant right now. Now, everybody understands that the underlying expectation is that at some point, we have to do that forty K by ourselves. I don't know when that brick wall's coming, nobody does, nobody does. They could say, "Hey, in three years, it's over," they could say, "Next year, it's over." It just depends, but with four billion sitting in the bank, he doesn't think it's going to be over maybe this year or next year. That's a guess, they've got money in the bank to spend, and they also laid this, this mandate on school districts. So the only thing I'm lucky to do is to claim the grant. I really don't like going back to our teachers every year and saying, "Yep, our baseline remains at forty K." That's, that's not the best position to be in either, but we have to get beyond forty K if they want to see that go up significantly. One thing we did do was give some, some larger step increases, there's no two seventy-five increase or two fifty, it's always five hundred at the minimum. But if they increase their education, we give them all their steps that they earned too. So it's a little better, but, but how do we get past forty K? Right now, Harrisburg, same size district as us, same assessed valuation, their operating levy is about a dollar more than ours. Forty-four thousand is what they're paying this year, they're doing it all on their own, they're doing it all on their own. So this is where we are financially, and it's really kind of hard to understand, I try to make it as simple as I can, but you got to listen, and listen, and listen, and figure out where you're really sitting. Some of the superintendents out there, they say, "Well, the state wants us to get to forty K," so they've been just kind of chipping away at it, but their, their levies look far different than ours, they're fifty cents, seventy-five cents, a lot of money ahead of ours. But you are seeing districts do exactly what we've tried to do, and what we're trying to do again, which is get some more money in the hopper so we can move that direction, and not, and you don't have to sit on the board or sit with a superintendent and says, "Hey, by the way, there's no grant next year, and we're going to be looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars we got to come up with out of our budget." That's, that's a bam, hit the wall. So it's coming, I just don't know how far it is away. What questions do you have for me?
About the school choice, you mentioned three percent, five percent, is that a, are there some, are there some sort of rules that would limit it to those?
That is, that would be the, that would be the limit. There's two limits they're talking about right now, three or five percent of your total enrollment.
Let's say, for example, let's say that it's a different school, and they had a whole bunch of kids that wanted to leave, who I guess they would take whoever applied first and deny the people that came.
They have to set up a process, yep, sure do. And if they move as a freshman, they're in high school, one of the rules that are in there, they said, "You can't play for a whole school year." So you're out of mischief activities for a year, you can't play varsity sports, that's one of them. So if they come in eighth grade though, they can move right into it, they do their sit-out year, and then they go right into ninth grade and they can play.
That's what I see.
Yep.
Especially local towns, is you've got all these kids playing travel ball together, and they'll play the same team.
Definitely going to be a draw, definitely going to be a draw, as people think this over. But that open enrollment's been around for probably, what, about three, four years now, Kelly, when we first started hearing about it? And now, was when Brad Pollitt got on, seemed like he kind of forwarded that, former super at Sedalia. So, you know, according to Willard Haley, it looks right, it's going to happen, it's a priority, so.
I read a little bit in there, but how are they figuring out transportation?
Transportation, there's, there's some different caveats going along with that. One kind of says that ascending school, the parents would have to pay for it. Another one says when they start looking at students with special needs, that there'd be some kind of way for us to claim it. I'll tell you the truth, Derek, I'd have to read back on it, because I've seen so many different ways they're handling it. At one point, it was all on the parents, now they're kind of coming up with some different caveats to maybe let the district they're going to be able to get that cost, or claim it as mileage or not, and I think it's going to get hacked out. I think it's just not clear to me which way they're going on that, but there's some different incarnations I've read on that. Yep. But us being on the hook for it would not be my, my hope, because, you know, how far are we going to start lugging kids, right? Be a big expense.
Anybody got anything else?
And there's some also, some other things with special, students with special needs as well. They talked about, well, you know, we would have to accept students, or we could reject them, so there has to be a process for that. Well, you see a student coming in with a lot of special needs, and they said, "That's discriminatory," and they're right, it is. So how does that work? You know, so they're trying to work that piece out too, and saying, "Well, you know, we don't want to accept students that are going to cost us more to meet their needs," and so it's a, it's a ball of yarn, they're going to have to untease and figure out how they want to handle that, so then, good for our legislatures, I think, because some of them tried to write us a real quick bill a while back, and then they started getting into all these things like transportation, and also with special needs, so we'll see. That's all I've got on that, guys.
Excuse me, so the, all of our administrator reports are on there, does anybody have any questions for any administrator that we got? I don't have any, just looks like it's busy.
It's always fun whenever you miss a week of school to start the second semester.
Right.
And then you get hit with pretty good sickness, and you're just chasing your tail, trying to catch up with the kids that have been gone.
All right, then, we're moving on. We've got a presentation, presentation time, Bright Futures, this is Lou will do.
All right, we're going to give you an overview of Bright Futures, this will be Bright Futures Tipton as we move forward. Previously, Dr. CJ Huff had visited, we had some community members here, I believe Amanda was here representing the board, and then also all the administrators attended, just to get an overview of what that would look like and how it would fit into Tipton. Lamanda and I went to Batesville, Arkansas, two weekends ago in the middle of the night, and got back in the middle of the night, a real quick trip, but we were able to visit with some schools from Arkansas and get some ideas about implementation. So just an overview of what this looked like, looks like we focus primarily on academic and life outcomes for students, but then we also know that students can't learn unless we worry about their well-being as well. We can't expect a child to sit in their seat and be ready to learn unless all of their basic needs are met. So these two things will work parallel to each other, and our, this whole premise is to find ways to engage the community to be able to meet those basic needs for students. This involves the time, talent, and treasure of the people in your community, working with business leaders, the Board of Education, communities, faith-based organizations, not just monetary things, but also building relationships and mentorship. We have currently put some things into place already, and I'll speak just a little bit about the elementary. High Five Friday is one of the things, this brings different businesses, churches have really been on this one, and then also just some of the clubs and things that we have in our school, but we have about fifteen. Fall and spring is a hot time to do that, we have not done that in the winter, no one wants to stand outside and be cold. But this just lets people see what we have coming into our school every day, it gives them idea of what students are coming, what their needs are when they walk in the door. Tomorrow will be, well, not tomorrow now, I guess, but we have Lunch Buddies that will start, we've sent out some invitations to about ten to fifteen different individuals that we think would be good mentors. Sarah Moon, our elementary counselor, has done a good job organizing this, and we have four who have two students apiece, and they'll be creating mentorships with those kids, so we're excited to get that started, and then watch that continue to grow. Community outreach for families in need, both of our counselors and our nurses have already done a great job of doing those things. Shoes, Nurse Molly will get buddy packs, food for the weekend. Also, we have, like, there's, there's so many organizations and things in the community that can provide stuff for our students, it's just finding out who can do what, and recently, like, we've had students who have needed glasses. Well, the Lions Club will, will provide those for kids, so we've been able to get them into the IDOCTER and get those for them, because they can't learn without it. And then, just something that I have noticed is that we have so many things going on, we have people that will show up at our doorstep at Christmas and say, "I want to give to the kids, I want to, I want to donate this much money," and it's trying to figure out who needs what, and where all can we kind of make sure that the high school's being met, the middle school, and then also the elementary kids. So just finding a way to organize all of this and put the right people around the table, because there's things out there that we don't know about, and there's things in the high school that I don't know about, but making sure that kids get what they need.
All right, so with the Bright Futures, there's a couple pillars, they have three pillars in their framework. The first one is to create communication and resource structures to meet any child's basic needs within twenty-four hours. So this is really just aligning all of those things in the community to be able to come together quickly so that those kids that, you know, like, maybe they're without water, or maybe they don't have a coat, or maybe they came to school today and their shoes are completely torn up and they need a new pair. So meeting those needs quickly rather than taking forever to combine all those resources in the community. The second pillar is to build community capacity, to improve problem-solving capabilities, to address the greater challenges faced by today's youth. So this is really like, as we come together, we're going to set up a Bright Futures Advisory Board in each of the building, and have a Bright Futures, or the Bright Futures Advisory Board will create a Bright Futures Council in each of the school-level buildings, because the elementary teachers, they don't know what the needs are in the high school, but the high school teachers know that, and so those high school teachers would be able to come to Bright Futures and say, "Hey, we have a kid that has a job interview next week, but he has no clothes, that are professional enough to go to a job interview," and so they would be the kind of liaison or go-between person for Bright Futures. And then the third pillar is to provide service learning opportunities, to provide students and teachers curriculum-based, hands-on service experiences, to grow generations of service-minded citizens. I mean, Bright Futures hopefully can create those good cycles of positive interactions at school. You know, the kids that are helped now hopefully remember that help that they received, and then they can become good, positive, successful community members in the future that can then give back as well. So moving forward, what we have coming up next, continued commitment to partner together to implement the Bright Futures framework in our community. We would need to identify the Bright Futures Coordinator, and as a liaison to the Bright Futures Advisory Board, and patience as we work together to just figure out what this is going to look like in our community. We are more than aware that Bright Futures in Tipton is not going to look like Bright Futures in Joplin looks like, or even Mexico, Missouri, because those organizations, the number of organizations and businesses, the number of churches that are available just aren't the same. And so, yeah, we, it'll take a little bit of time to figure out what Bright Futures Tipton looks like, but I think that if we do it well, it can be a good springboard for other communities in the area. You know, as we were talking, we were thinking of other communities, like, there is a need in this community for, you know, kids to get help.
One of the things they talked about too, is making sure that this doesn't become another thing the school puts on, because we already see these kids, and Lamanda is already our PTO in the elementary, she's our PTO president, she's in our building a lot as a substitute teacher, so finding someone in the community who can kind of lead this, and then we become, we tell them what our needs are, and we help, because I know there's people who will say, "Hey, I will donate tennis shoes for a kid," or "I'll give this," but we don't necessarily know who to go to. So it's always this person as the leader, the identification of, like, they lead the advisory board, they collect all those resources and know who to go to when we have needs from the school.
And then, kind of the next steps moving forward, is to begin establishing an advisory board to lead that local effort, figuring out the people in the community that have the time, talent, and treasure to share with the kids that are in need and our students in need. Identify the Bright, the District Bright Futures Coordinator, schedule a advisory board training. Once that advisory board is put into place... Schedule a advisory board training, once that advisory board is put into place. And then to just promote the development of Bright Futures in the community. A lot of that promotion probably would come through Facebook and just getting the word out on there that this is in the works. As I was looking through some other communities in Missouri and in Arkansas and wherever that have Bright Futures already. Just seeing some of the great things that they're doing is really encouraging. And hopefully there are other people in the community that feel passionate about kids and that want to help. Yeah, I look at this as a really great way to give back to the community and to just help those kids that, that don't have, that aren't as lucky to have a brand-new pair of shoes or whatever the case may be. You know, one school that I was looking at was the Bright Futures put out that they, winter was coming. The elementary teachers noticed that they had a lot of their low-income kids that were without stocking hats. And so a church that partnered with Bright Futures, they decided to knit like 300 stocking hats. Like every elementary student got one. Which again is great because not one single kid was singled out like, oh, you need a stocking hat. You know, everybody got one. But it was a great way for those retired ladies in that church to be able to give back. Because they can't get up and, you know, come to school and maybe eat lunch with the kids, but they could knit all day until everybody had a stocking hat. So that was just a really.
We have that a lot already. Some of these organizations or even the faith-based community in, in Tipton has done a great job. They'll come constantly and say, what can we do for your kids? Or what do you need? And off the top of my head, sometimes I don't know, but if we had very specific needs, it'd be able to tell, like, direct that in a way.
Yeah, so it's more or less just like taking everything that we're doing and organizing it into one community organization so that everybody knows like, okay, I'm gonna go to Bright Futures and contact them because I have, you know, a surplus of meat that I want to earn. You know, a cow that I want to donate.
We had that, we had a family who took a couple of people in the community who wanted to give meat boxes to families. But that would just kind of go through there and then it wouldn't necessarily, like, that showed up at the elementary, but it wouldn't just have to be an elementary thing. It could be who in our whole district needs that and we would know. And so everybody's getting what they need, but not just throwing things, making sure it's very specific to what they're facing. Any questions?
So with the coordinator, these other schools or places, are they using employees more or community members?
And that's what he, I think that's one of the first things he told us, is that this does not need to be something that's ran by all of the school people. This needs to be someone in the community who works closely with the school so they know what our needs are. But it's someone outside of the school.
Are they looking more like retired teachers or somebody working closely with Ministry of Alliance or Chamber of Commerce?
Anyone really, I don't think that it has to be someone specific, just someone who has a passion to do it.
Yeah.
In the Mexico area, it's the Chamber of Commerce President.
Is this a funded coordinator too? Will they be funded or?
Not through Bright Futures, no, I think it looks different.
Volunteer basis.
Yeah, kind of like, I think, to start out and see what it looks like and see how involved it is and how much time someone has to get to it.
Because you know, when people start to give, you gotta have places to store.
Right, and that's what they said, because they said, you know, sometimes you'll have all these things show up. And one thing about Bright Futures, it's a really great resource for PD as well and promotion. And he was talking about, oh, well, we also work closely with TOMS or Walmart. And they have all these different places that they have, you know, connections to that we wouldn't know just about in Tipton.
Right. But yeah, we wouldn't.
But yes, we need some place to store. You start a shoe closet or a clothes closet, you're gonna have to place.
I just know Ashley's closet is, it's programmed. It doesn't, and you run over to this thing.
Oh, that stage is clean.
It's a good problem to have, when you have stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just having the right resources that people still want to give.
Yeah, and we ran into that a lot at Christmas time specifically. Not that, I think everything that was given was great, but we feel like we might leave kids out sometimes that we don't know about that have needs.
Have socks and caps and gloves?
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
I mean, do you still have some?
Oh, yes, we do.
In backpacks.
Yeah, we have backpacks and stuff. And then we have a, a community-based, or I think it was a church that donated, they make blankets for every one of the kindergartners for naptime every year at the beginning of the year. I think it's the Methodist Church.
Yeah.
Sometimes it takes this process to get people to wake up.
I think it's a positive way to engage our community with the school.
Yeah, I know, like, Chambers started doing the turkey chop this year. And what they did with their money was, I think they communicated to you to find a few families to provide a thing to you.
Yeah.
And then the rest I donated to Ministry of Alliance.
Right, and we saw, you know, some community members and businesses giving extra for our school supply fund whenever we started that this year for PTO. And so far, I feel like it's worked out really great. I mean, the kids that come in new, they have all the same school supplies. You know, the teachers just know to go to the little school supply cabinet in the office and gather up their stuff. And if they didn't have a book bag, then Molly probably has that. But it makes that really simple. It made the beginning of the year super simple and easy. And you didn't have any of those kids that were coming to school like empty-handed, because everybody was. You know, they had either given their, we did ask for a $10 donation if they didn't mind. And I would say probably like 50% brought in their $10. But then of the 50, it was probably closer to 60. Of that 60%, probably almost half of them gave a little bit extra to pay for somebody else. Right, yeah.
I mean, you see for teachers, there wasn't a lot of waste, that stuff can roll over in the office.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you, ladies.
I don't have anything, thank you. Old business, so now we got new business.
You have your health insurance rates there. We need to approve to use OSBA. And our renewal. Any questions with that, guys?
Is this our cost or is it?
This is what we pay for health insurance. We, we will set the rate there right after we say we're gonna use OSBA. You're looking at all the rates that are offered. Then we'd set a, set an amount that we're gonna give each employee per month. Yeah, so that's part of the, we set the board paid insurance rate.
Do I make a motion to use OSBA for our health insurance?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Did you get that, Amy? I did, Ashley seconded it, 7-0.
And then we have the board paid insurance rate. It reflects a 5.7% increase. We had two years, we didn't have any increase at all. That was not the case across a lot of other insurance, self-funded insurance companies. And we, we did well. And honestly, we're just going, my recommendation is just to go up with that 5.7% to 5.66 per month. There's a comparison, there you can see that, what we're, if you look at that document, it's got the green on what we would go to. Where we were, what those different health plans cost. I thought it was easier than looking at that chart. Kind of check, click that if you haven't clicked it before. So there's your new board-based paid insurance amounts.
Went a while without an increase too, right?
Say again?
You went a while without an increase too, right?
Two years.
Two years, so.
Yeah.
5%.
Yeah, we, we actually went away from, my first year, we went away from MEUP, MEUHP. They were proposing, just so you guys know, this can happen with self-funded health insurance. Is, we have a big group and they're doing a lot of different schools. They're, they're bringing in the money, they're covering the bills, they get reinsurance. Listen to me talk insurance. You get reinsurance and MEUHP ended up in trouble, excuse me a minute. They ended up in trouble because they ended up where they were losing, they keep a fund balance as well. And so they were going in a hole. And so they had to assess all of their member schools in the year that we went off. And I ducked and dodged it and got us into OSBA and working with some area of schools. And we were lucky because we would have paid them another $30,000 to stay with MEUP. Because they assessed all their members that next year. I, I'd say lucky because it was my first year as superintendent and I was just paying attention. And some of my former colleagues actually worked with Capstone. My former principal, who hired me as a teacher, actually works with OSBA now and reached out to me. So that helped me. And he tutored me a little bit on that. And the head of OSBA is actually the husband of the former special ed director that I had as a teacher. So I knew some of these people and knew to trust them, they're out of followers. And I, I had told him, I said, wow, we're not gonna need you, we got MEUHP, it's going great. Next thing I know, they handed us a 14% increase. And they started talking about assessment and they were, basically, they hadn't reinsured themselves enough or whatever. They had a lot of claims and it was not going well. OSBA has seen an increase on claims, but the latest data that I saw, they're doing really well. They do need to have an increase though to kind of keep their fund balance healthy and take care of people. So I, I, I'm just glad what they've done over the last seven years now. 106 schools are involved with them right now.
Majority of our staff use HSA versus PPO or do you know?
No, I don't have that data. I don't know, but I would probably look it up.
This PPO looks inflated, you know?
Yeah. Any questions on that?
Just get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to set the board paid insurance rate to 5.66 per month for the 25, 26 school year.
Got a motion, Beau? I'll second it. All in favor? 7-0, Amy.
Okay, now we have the one for discussion, it's Board Policy GCPB. Beau, you requested this to be on here, so anything you want to talk about with this and proposals?
Yeah, I think that this was put in place a few years ago, like you say, in the notes to help deal with some folks leaving after they signed a contract. And I agree that there should be a penalty and it may, this may be actually accurate, I'm not sure. But we did get some feedback last year about feeling that it was punitive. And I thought that this time, this year, as we kind of looked at that, we ought to have at least a discussion there on that. Some of the feedback I got was about just the flat amounts and how that could vary and impact people differently depending upon what their salary was. And, and again, that may still be fine. One idea would be to go to a percentage of salary rather than a, a flat amount. I'm not sure if that's something that districts do, but I thought we should all talk about just.
There are some districts that do that.
If this is, if our rates are where we want them to be, or if we think we ought to make a move on the end of these.
Does anybody think? Or does anybody have an opinion? I'll give you my opinion, right, wrong or indifferent. I mean, I think they're fine, that's how we kind of protect ourselves. The district changes, we just can't be, can't have a science teacher say, you know, shop theirself and take a job somewhere. Then here we are, no science teacher.
Yeah, I mean, the.
There has to be, I mean, there has to be something. We just can't let them willy-nilly apply to six different schools and then there we are scrambling two weeks before school starts and we don't have a teacher. Think what Beau was trying to, I don't want to speak, I kind of think a percentage is, is a better way to go. Not saying there shouldn't be anything, I agree with you, but maybe a percentage would be this. But there's a flat rate for, the way this is set up, you know, it's $5,000, you know. Yeah, but if you, if you move to a flat percentage rate, 20%, 20% of a hundred's a lot less than 20% of a thousand. You know, the penalty's gonna be different for a first-year teacher versus an administrator.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, it would cut both ways. I mean, it would be, you could have more of a, I don't think penalty's the right word, or so CUs, but.
Liquidated damages.
Yes, the, the liquidated damages amount, you know, you go to a percentage, it'd be higher than what it is.
Right.
And, and again, you know, the scenario is that somebody says, I'm, that someone goes in and signs a contract with Tipton. And says, I'm going to be working for Tipton and then wants out of that contract later. I mean, that's what we're talking about. So I do agree that there's gotta be some sort of, I mean, if you're gonna leave, you probably shouldn't sign a contract. I mean, I, I agree with that. But I'm just focusing more on the amounts and trying to make sure that we're, we're good with them.
Because our amounts were considerably less.
Remember, at one point.
At one point, yeah. I don't remember if it was 1,000, 1500.
Yeah, it was pretty low.
And the wording or something wasn't strong enough for us to be able to stick to it. If I remember right, that's why we did this. So we had something from the attorneys that was stronger, I guess.
When did we issue contracts, April?
Well, you guys will approve teaching contracts after the next board meeting. And then they usually have about two weeks, Texas about a week to get them all lined up and on the salary schedule. And they have two weeks, but now, now, tenure, sorry, non-tenure teachers have about two weeks to turn it in and say, yes, I'm coming, no, I'm not.
But didn't that date used to be, and I may be completely wrong, like April 15th or something?
Yeah, it was usually close to that at one point, yeah. That was for me as a teacher.
It changed though. I mean, it's always gonna like have Friday before the next board meeting. Right, so then we could, if somebody knows on the fence, maybe have something ready for the next one. So you gotta wait a full, one of the days.
You know, thing to remember too is your tenure teachers have until June 1st. It doesn't matter, they don't have to sign a contract. They're on a continuing contract. So you get past April 15th, they're yours, no matter what. And they have to tell you, sorry, June 1st to tell you they're resigning. So they, if they want to look for another job in that time period between now and June 1st, they can. There's no penalty to them, so.
I don't necessarily have a dollar amount or percentage to recommend. We can keep this the same. But again, I thought we should talk about it. Does anyone have any strong feelings here?
No, a larger amount will make them get off the fence and they'll be a little hesitant about signing if they know that there will be a penalty. I mean, you know, if it's a small amount, they're gonna go, yeah, I'll sign it. And then if I don't find any, if I find something better, I'll, I'll just pay my little penalty, penalty and go on, so. I mean, I feel sorry for some of them if it's health issues or, you know, family issues.
And you can choose as a board member to waive them. If something like that came up. And also, it's, it's hard to understand this because you as a board, if someone comes and says, I want out of my contract. You don't have to allow them to pay to get out liquidated damages. It's an option, but you can choose to enforce the contract. Say, no, we expect you to be here. We're not doing any this year, we're not doing any liquidated damages this year. I haven't done that, but you can. And, and that, that reasoning would be that you wouldn't do it when you go ahead and let them pay their liquidated damages. The reason you do that is because they don't want to be here, obviously.
Are these amounts?
Yeah.
Pretty close to everybody around us or do we have any ideas?
We're on the high end. We are on the high end according to the old hammer at MSBA. We're on the high end. We are on the high end, according to the old hammer at MSBA. But she's the one that recommended these amounts to me. She said, especially when this stuff is going on. And invariably, guys, here, here's the thing that you can't put a price on. It's not a penalty. It's liquidated damages. So let's say I hire Kelly Kohler, uh, he's a science teacher. I hire him March 30th. He signs a contract. And Kelly says, but you know, I'm gonna look at California, I'm gonna look at Jeff City, and I'm gonna keep going to interviews. So he finally gets a job, June 10th. He signs a, he wants to sign a contract with Jeff City. He's gonna make 10, 15 grand more. He comes back to us and all that time from end of March until June 15th, we have not posted for a science teacher. We've lost all the opportunity to find someone. And we didn't know he was still looking because he said he was with us. So what price do you put on that time period when we could've had a fully certified science teacher for our kids? We're putting people under contract because we're doing it for the kids. If people choose to go out and still shop, then you can choose to enforce the contract or you could say your liquidated damages are $7,500. This is June 10th, okay? Are you sure you wanna go on down the road? You, you told us you're coming. It's almost like breaking a covenant. You're breaking your word. You say you're gonna be here and they're not. So we are telling, especially our probationary teachers, we're telling them, don't sign this contract if you're gonna go out and look for a job. I talked, talked with MSTA two or three or four times now on this. I said, well, that's what we're gonna tell them too. Don't sign it if you're going out looking for a job. And you know what? That's okay, but it has to be fair for us as well to look for that person's replacement. We've got to have that window. This is the, this is a terrible time of year coming up for trying to figure out how we're gonna staff, especially when you start seeing movement happen. Because we're, we're out there grabbing for the best people, aren't we, team? We're out there grabbing for the best people we can find. You know, we're listening, we're watching Facebook, we're talking, oh yeah, yeah, we're looking for people. And this is how, and it's dog eat dog trying to convince people to walk in the building, you know, and come and see us, you know, come, we want you to work with our kids, so. You know, we're not trying to penalize anybody. We want people to enter into contract with us and fulfill. That's what we want. More than anything. And good certified people. This community wants certified teachers.
Is there any reason why ours would be on the high side compared to others?
It was a recommendation from MSBA so that we make it serious. You know, there are other districts that have it this high. Because.
I mean, it seems like all, every, all this stuff that you're talking about, I think all of this is act, is absolutely true. But it's also absolutely true for every other district.
Right. Some districts have an easier time of drawing people in. Small districts like us will always have difficulty.
So what's our process? Like, so Kelly's contract, I'll use your example. Your contracts do, so about April 15th-ish?
It would be, it would be, you guys will approve the list of tenures in March, the next board meeting. And the next thing that'll happen is we will start putting the contracts together, getting them out, setting a deadline of about two weeks. They decide if they wanna sign.
What I'm saying is, is if Kelly gets his contract and he's like on the fence, well, there might be an opportunity.
You can go anywhere.
California.
Yeah.
And then we want our contracts back in. I'm gonna use April 15th.
Then we will post for his job if he does not return his contract.
So is his contract still valid all the way?
To the end of the year? Oh, yeah.
The contract we've offered him is still good, so.
No.
That's my question is I don't, I don't know how the process works.
Yeah, it's not.
So if he wants to go look at California just in case?
Yeah.
You know, and you say you're, tell him, if you're looking, don't sign. Once it hits that time limit, is that contract void?
We cut it off because we're gonna go look for somebody else to fill that spot. In other words, I can't offer it to him and then go look for somebody and offer it to them. So I have to stop offering it to Kelly, because Kelly's looking. It doesn't mean though that we couldn't look for the next month while Kelly looks. We get to that month and Kelly says, you know, Dr. Rob, I'd really like to come back after all. And we can say, all right, we come to for the board. Yeah, we wanna offer him a contract again. He looked around and decided, he looked around and found out. It's like, he wants to be here.
So I just don't know how the process works.
That, that can happen and has happened in other districts I've been in. That does happen from time to time. People go window shopping for a while. But if, if Kelly's gonna, the teacher is gonna window shop, the district has to be active going out looking for that science teacher in that window, because that's prime time. It, you get into mid-June or so, July, some of you have been on this board and see what kind of candidates we get sometimes and it's like, ew, I don't know. I mean, we'll see, you know, and, you know, let's, well, let's come in and see how it goes, you know? Maybe have to put a little more PD into them. Um, we might have to, we've had some of our administrators actually coming in July and they're supposed to be off and have to get, they get paid to come in and work and start working the process trying to hire somebody else. So they're coming in on their, their break time, the time they're off contract to work. So that's a cost to us too.
So say Kelly's, goes window shopping, sorry, you're okay. But Kelly goes window shopping and we don't offer his contract after that point. We start looking, say Bo applies.
Yeah, Bo applies, okay.
Cause then Kelly and Bo both have to interview back for the position, say, you know.
Depending on if they want Kelly back. Do we want Kelly back? We want Kelly back. Yeah, we want Kelly back. But if Bo interviews and he's the new science teacher, say, wow, we're impressed with Bo. Bo, we got a contract for you. Kelly already turned his down. He's basically turning it down if you guys are turning it down. Now, only probationary teachers are like that. They got that little window there. The tenure teachers get all the way to June 1st. So they've got a lot, they have a longer window automatically. They earned it. They, they've got five plus years in, in the district or have to earn tenure.
Once you get past, it's really, really. I understand that. I just tried to, so I know the process.
It's, it's, it's something. Believe me.
We're setting up business deals waiting on that day. Waiting to make sure everybody turns it down.
Get you. I understand.
Yeah.
So what's everybody's thoughts? Are we gonna leave this nomination's the same? Are we gonna hash out and redo it?
I, my opinion.
Well, first-year teacher, when you say 33.5?
Yes, yeah. 5,000, 40.
Forty, what's that?
But it's actually 40 because we take the grant. Or wherever they fall in the first year with us could be higher than that. And we've had some good teachers here lately. We've hired it well into the salary schedule.
Yeah, so I mean, you looked at 40, if you looked at 10%, then you're looking at a $4,000 at the, at the base. So that's not too far off of where it's at, where it's at right now. You'd have to go below that percentage.
Now, as a board, do we have the option to, well, use Kelly again, okay? He, uh, he signed his contract, but now he wants out of it. Do we have the option that we can manipulate that, uh, liquidation cost or is it a boom, that number and that number only?
You're, you are the Board of Education. You can make that allowance if you want to. These are your policies. So they're your laws. If you choose to vote to violate your own policy, you can do that. You're not going to jail for it.
Yeah, they, they're just, you open yourself up to.
Try to be consistent.
That would be the bad thing, isn't it?
I think it'd have to be some sort of really unique, um, situation where you would say, okay, this justifies a, you know, us deviating from our policy. Maybe, yeah, something like that would be a good, that's a good.
I just hate where it'd be viewed as a scare tactic to keep people on, you know? And I don't know, we've not had that many people that's had been exercising right too.
We've had four.
Four, I was gonna say three.
Had four.
I know we've had one at least since I've been on the board.
And they continued to look for jobs. They held their contract. They signed it, said they were coming back, told, communicated to us all they were coming back. Next thing you know, they're walking in and they've got a bigger job at a bigger district or a district that's gonna pay them significantly more.
I'm okay with living it the way it is.
Perfect.
I agree with Ashley. Anybody else?
I tell you, your admin team appreciates that, because I did, I didn't tell you this to the very end. All of them support that we keep this in place, because it makes people seriously better for our contracts. And it does generate a lot of extra work.
Well, I, I think not if, I mean, not to say Kelly's wrong, but I don't want them to view it as a scare tactic, but think about it before you sign it. You know, if you're not, if you don't wanna be here, then fine. Go somewhere else, but don't sign that contract until you're sure.
Right.
I mean, that, that's my opinion and that and a couple dollars will get you a cup of coffee.
I think it's a fair opinion, but I, I will say that like stuff like this, we probably, I mean, even though we came to an agreement here that we, that we're keeping it, you know, as things move from year to year, I think these policies we've gotta keep talking about to make sure they're appropriate now. Because obviously, these were, this was set at a time where we were having a lot of issues. So, and then our situation.
If you lower it, you might, you might have some issues.
Maybe so. And, and that's, I'm, I'm just using this as an example. There's other.
Definitely, how many non-tenured versus tenured teachers you got.
Yeah.
Right now, we have a lot of non-tenured teachers.
I mean, that's what I was saying, if you're gonna, you gotta pay to play, right?
Well, they're all, there's a bunch of different types of policies we've got that I, I just think, you know, anytime they come up, we just gotta, that, we can't just blow by them and say, okay, let's continue.
Well, I agree.
So that's all I'll say. So I'm glad we talked about it.
Exercise.
Me too. I'm happy now.
All right, um, I'll move us into executive session pursuant to 610.021 to discuss three and 13 to include the Board of Education. Uh, Dr. Rob.
So we got a motion by Bo.
Second.
It's seconded by Derek. Bo, David.
Yes.
Ashley. Kelly. Amanda. Derek.
Yes.
Yourself, yes. Seven oh.